Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Mattel. I am this year's president of the Eugene Water and Electric Board, and I will call the August 5th Board Meeting to order. I'll ask that all of the commissioners make sure that your cameras and your microphones are on so that the rest of us can see and hear you. My first thing up is to quickly do an agenda check. I assume all the commissioners have a copy of the agenda in front of them. Does anybody wish to make a change or alteration to the agenda? And you'll have to speak up, by the way. I don't have a view of everybody the way I have in the past. So if one of the commissioners wants to be recognized, you're going to have to speak up. All right, well, hearing none, we will move into our second item. We have resequenced the agenda a little bit. Normally, we go into items from commissioners. Today, we are going to go directly into public testimony or public input. So I'm opening up a public input session, and we'll read a brief preamble. And I believe we have four folks who wish to speak, three of them which will be summarized by Joe Harwood. So let me just read this preamble very quickly for public input. When your name is called, unmute. This applies to you, Linda, and you only, I think. By pressing number six, please state your name and optionally, your address or ward, and speak clearly into your telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present her testimony. Please keep track of time, and if needed, the board president, me, will notify you when your time has elapsed. After all testimony is heard, each commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if he or she chooses, although by policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time. So Linda, I believe you're first. If you'll go ahead and unmute. I am going to set a timer for three minutes. And hold on just a moment. It took me that long to get it going. And there it is. Why don't you go ahead?
All right, thank you. Good evening, commissioners and General Manager Frank Lawson. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. I'm Linda Perrine. I am just outside the urban growth boundary on Highway 58 and a volunteer with 350 Eugene. I'd like to commend E-Web on a well-done electrification impact analysis report dated August 4, 2020. While it was a thorough look at potential impacts in adoption rates of EVs, space heating and water heating electrification, this report has a glaring omission of potential impact of local residential, commercial and community solar in E-Web's future planning. This report should be amended to include the potential low, medium and high adoption rates for solar PV technology over the same 30-year period. Indeed, in the report's executive summary, you state this analysis forecasts varying degrees of electric end-use technology adoption over a 30-year period. Why is solar PV technology excluded from this analysis? On page 13 of your report, you show the yearly profile of the Northwest Power Pool carbon intensity. This shows that the months of August through November have the highest carbon intensity, presumably due to hydropower being lower in these months and more dirty power must be imported from other states. This also happens to be the same months when solar plus storage would help offset the need for out-of-state imported power. Why does E-Web continue not to address the impact local solar plus storage electricity could have on its projected power profile, carbon intensity and resiliency planning? California is finding that PG and E is no longer a sure bet for energy production during fire seasons, and many customers are turning to self-sufficiency through solar and battery storage. It seems most of the West Coast understands these benefits of solar, but for some reason, E-Web and Lane County continue to blatantly ignore the benefits of bountiful solar energy right here in Eugene. Please consider amending this report to include the impact of solar and battery storage adoption rates over the same 30-year period. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. I believe that Joe Harwood is planning to read the statements provided by three other folks. Joe, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Maital. The first letter we have today is from Richard Weinman, 55 West 31st Avenue in Eugene. First, I appreciate E-Web. I appreciate the great service we get, and it's easy to take it for granted. I know it's not that easy behind the scenes. I encourage E-Web to expand into the business of becoming an internet service provider to our service area. Access to the internet has become a necessity for many and is a utility at this point. Those who can least afford an internet connection often need it the most. The pandemic has really brought this situation into focus. My grandson is in elementary school. Because some children don't have internet at home, last spring, the school system was unable to provide a full range of distance learning options because it wouldn't be fair to those who are less advantaged. People without a fast internet connection cannot work from home. My son, who lives on disability income, can't afford the internet. My brother-in-law, who only gets a small amount of social security income, can't afford the internet. This puts both of them at an extreme disadvantage in doing things the rest of us have come to take for granted. Creating a community internet service will be expensive and time-consuming. But E-Web has the infrastructure, and in the long run, the community benefit will be worth the investment. A for-profit provider should not be the only option for a critical utility. I hope you will aggressively begin this conversation soon. It will be a long-term project and is worth the effort. Sincerely, Richard Weinman. The second testimony we have is from Jim Ball, 4444 Paddock Drive in Eugene. If E-Web has access to more low-carbon hydropower than it currently uses, then Eugene could electrify cars and buildings and lower its greenhouse gas emissions. But would that reduction be canceled by increases in emissions in other cities? If E-Web's excess hydropower is currently being sold to other utilities, would electrification in Eugene result in more need for fossil fuel electricity in other places? Could the people of Eugene spend millions of dollars converting cars and buildings to electricity with no net reduction of greenhouse gases at the regional level? Please address this question in the electrification impact study. Thank you, Jim Ball. And then our final comment comes from Jim New, 3072 Webster Street, Eugene. E-Web Commissioners and General Manager Lawson, I want to commend Susan Ackerman, Megan Capper and staff for the informative electrification impact analysis report. It was well-written and answered many questions. It was comforting to read E-Web's energy supply and delivery system can manage expected low growth from electrification of commercial and residential space and water heating, as well as an increase in electric vehicle charging. This was a concern of the city council as they took... Excuse me. This was a concern of the city council as they looked to reduce carbon emissions through fuel switching from gas to electric and reduce future gas infrastructure. According to the report, fuel switching will only produce a marginal load impact by 2050. The EIAR stated that transportation-related emissions were a major contributor to the community's carbon footprint, and each new electric vehicle replacing an internal combustion engine results in a 2.75 metric ton reduction in annual carbon emissions in the E-Web service territory. However, there was not a chart showing what the reduction would be if the electric vehicle was charged by a photovoltaic rooftop solar system. My concern is solar was addressed only once in the report when E-Web is aware of projected snowpack levels to be nonexistent by 2040, which will challenge hydroenergy sourcing. Spatial and water heat pump systems and EV purchases are recognized and supported by E-Web as a means to reduce community carbon emissions, but no mention of solar. Promoting rooftop solar installations in E-Web service territory should also be part of E-Web's EIAR and in E-Web's future energy sourcing. I hope a chart showing the impacts of solar rooftop installations in the service area will be added to the study. Thank you for your time and this report.
All right, thanks for the reading into the testimony. And I guess I'll just ask briefly, because that's my habit, is there anybody else who happens to have called in in these last few minutes?
No, there's no additional public comment.
Okay, well, thank you. In that case, I will close public testimony and offer an opportunity briefly for each of the commissioners to respond, if she or he wishes. We'll do it in order of how we are normally seated. So that would be... Oh, gosh, I'm not even sure. It's been so long. I think that means it's Mindy first, is that right?
Yes, I think so. So we're not on to items from board members, or are we?
No, we are responding. Thanks, Mindy. We are having the opportunity to respond to public testimony, and then we'll close out that session and move into items from board members.
I don't have any comments at this time.
All right, well, thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Sorry, I thought Dick was next. Okay.
It's been a long time since I've... Maybe I'm misremembering our normal order in which we sit. And if that's the case, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Well, one, I'm really appreciative that people are finding ways to get us the information so that we can get the testimony in. This time presents a really difficult challenge in terms of actually working with the public directly. You know, it's usually very nice to have people come in and read the testimony directly. So I'm glad that Linda was able to participate. Really appreciate your perspective and all of those who did send testimony in. I love hearing it. I read it, I look at it, I think about it. It gives me a different perspective, especially from those who are motivated to come in. So thank you for that. I will look for, you know, some response from General Manager Lawson and potentially from staff on some of the key points that were raised. So thank you.
Commissioner Hugson?
Just a quick comment on the testimony regarding solar options as a way to meet future demand. I appreciate that input, and would just want to note that the report that we have before us tonight is a draft of the Phase 1 report. The scope of Phase 1, and I'm sure staff will cover this in their presentation, I think, was to characterize the amount of load and the load characteristics associated with potential conversions of space heating to efficient electric forms for more carbon-intensive forms, and also to look at the potential load implications associated with conversion of the transportation sector. And I think in that respect, the report does a good job, and we'll be hearing more about it tonight. I don't think the scope of this first phase was to look at how, over a course of time, E-Web would serve that new load or what the different resource alternatives or demand-side options would be for meeting both energy and peak loads associated with that new electric demand. I think that work will be done in Phase 2, and the costs and the alternatives and the implications of that, I think, will be reflected in that Phase 2 study and report, which will be consolidated with Phase 1 to give us a complete picture. So I think, at the end of the day, the people who testified with that interest in solar will be satisfied with the way that we handle that. I'm just pointing out that it's not something that was immediately pertinent for Phase 1 inasmuch as we were just looking at characterizing the potential new electric load associated with those conversions. And we'll be hearing more about that tonight. So thank you for your feedback and your input, and hopefully, that will be something that's covered in due course.
All right, well, thank you, Dick. I'll speak for a moment, and then, John, you'll be last. So I just also wanted to thank staff for making it possible for community members to participate. Really do appreciate that. We might be in this situation for much longer than we anticipated back in March when we first shifted to an online version. So I'm glad to see that we're able to give community members an opportunity to listen in but also speak. So I'll just very briefly add a little bit to what Dick said regarding solar. So I agree, we weren't expecting to see it in this first draft, but I know that the staff members responsible for writing it are on the line and will be presenting it to us later in the meeting. So I'll ask them to just update us on where and when we might find information about solar, as well as the question asked by... I forget the last name, but a man named Jim about how our use of clean renewable power from the grid displaces others from taking advantage of it if we otherwise would have sold it on the wholesale market. I just want to remind everybody, really, that one of the values we get from this report and one of the reasons why we commissioned it, asked for it, is so to answer questions that are commonly held by the community. So to the extent that these questions get answered upfront in that document, I think it's a really good thing. I did want to say briefly, as far as I recall, currently, rooftop solar in Eugene accounts for less than 1% of our generation capacity. I think it's even closer to 1/10 of 1%. It's pretty insignificant. And that's from somewhere in the range of, I want to say, 400 or 500 rooftops. The exact number, I don't recall. Frank or others can fill that gap in. So just to give you some context, it's a thing that we have supported all along, but through incentives of various kinds. But its impact on our total load has been insignificant, though we should certainly get a clear understanding of what its total potential is. So I'll be interested in that as well. All right, well, I will pass it off to John Brown, if he has any comments to add.
Thank you. I have no additional comments. I think my predecessors have said it well. Thank you.
Okay, well, we will move on from the public input session. And I don't know if I formally welcomed everybody to the meeting. I know we have all five commissioners. I know we have many staff members, perhaps some members of the public as well. I can see that there's about 25 folks in total on the line. So welcome to yet another virtual E-Web meeting, and thanks for joining us. So with that, I'll open it up for our third item, and that is items from board members. We'll go in the order that I should have gone in the first time. So, Mindy, you're still first, but Dick, you'll be second.
All right. The only thing I really have of note for this past month is that earlier this... or last week, Steve, Frank and I met with the City of Eugene for what should be our quarterly meeting to talk about shared environmental interests. And I think that it was a really good meeting, and we talked about three main things. One was that something we talked about months before was potentially doing some kind of pilot program that we pair with the city to encourage landlords in some lower-income neighborhoods to further incentivize energy efficiency in their rental units. So I'm not sure... We weren't sure what the status was, but they said that the city had been talking about it. So hopefully, soon, city staff and E-Web staff will come up with some kind of proposal or idea for that. The second thing we talked about was, how can we make sure that when the city is talking about issues that relate to E-Web, like when they're talking about their Northwest natural contract and they have assumptions about what that means for E-Web, that they actually consult with us? So I think that Frank will be included in those discussions, and hopefully, will give a presentation to city council. And we just kind of stated that we really want to be brought in early with those discussions so that we don't feel like we're always chasing them down. And then the third thing that we talked about, Steve had asked a question about the expansion of fiber in Eugene, and city council had a work session on that last fall, and they're a little further ahead on exploring this issue. They have some information about grants. And I know that in our board packet, we had some information about E-Web's side of that, but hopefully, we'll get more information from the city on where they're at. And our next meeting is going to be in late September or early October so that we don't lose kind of the thread of all of these conversations. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mindy. Commissioner Hugson?
I'll just give a brief report as your representative to the Northwest Public Power Association. As you know, that association exists for the common benefit of our publicly-owned utilities here in the region. And they're an organization that provides a number of services to its membership, the largest of which is a training function that brings in about half of their revenue. They've done a really good job over the years of managing their costs, and their dues have not gone up, really, in all of the time that I've served on the board. In fact, last year, they gave us a little bit of a rebate. And that notwithstanding, they, like other organizations and nonprofits, are experiencing some real challenges in the COVID world, unable to hold their conventions or much of their training. They're positioned to be able to do that, but given the circumstance of most of the utilities, the attendance obviously makes it difficult to put their normal courses on. So they're going to be drawing on their reserves over the next while as they take a revenue hit in that respect. They'll continue to provide training and services as webinars and other things that can be accessed remotely. But I'd just give you a heads-up that they're, like a lot of organizations, in a bit of a financial stress and fortunately, in a good financial position, at least to ride this out probably through the end of the year. But it could have some implications for offerings and potentially dues next year. And I'd just give you a heads-up. I don't think we're looking at anything catastrophic there, but given that the circumstances make it difficult for them to maintain their offerings and their revenue stream, that's kind of their situation. So thanks for the time to report on that, and that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
I don't have anything to report on this month. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll go next. First, I just want to thank Commissioner Schlossberg for running the meeting last month in my absence. I had the most fantastic seven-day trip down the Middle Fork of the Salmon with my son and a bunch of friends. And for those of you who might love rivers out there, you'll know that when somebody calls to offer you an opportunity to run the Middle Fork, you pretty much just drop everything and say yes, even if it causes you to miss an E-Web meeting. I think that's the first one I have ever missed in the near eight years that I have participated. There was one other that I was in Hawaii for, but I managed to actually join by phone. So this is the first one that worked out that way. And it felt a little strange to not know what went on. But anyways, thank you, Mindy, for running in my absence. The only other thing that I'll say in addition to Commissioner Schlossberg's report about the meeting with city leadership, I also just... I suppose as a private citizen and even as a staff member at the U-Web who just sat in on the city's work session last... It was either Tuesday or Wednesday. They do their sessions by Zoom these days to watch them vote on their cap and also update the community on progress with their Northwest franchise fee. So I spent an hour and a half just watching that. Their city climate action plan has now passed, and so they'll be moving forward with implementation. But they granted staff an additional six months to resolve the franchise fee. Or not the franchise fee, excuse me, the franchise agreement, which may include a fee. So we'll just have to wait and see for that much longer. But as Mindy reported, hopefully, we will have an opportunity to weigh in on those discussions so that everybody's really clear about what the impacts will be from our perspective. Let's see. Commissioner Brown?
All right, thank you. I've got several items. Number one, recently, I've had a rash of constituents calling about issues anywhere from ramping of the river, design permits, ruts in the roads. And without exception, Frank and staff have been absolutely incredible in their responses and their actions. And I really want to thank Frank and the staff for doing that because these people call me, and they're all spun up about something. And when we get right back to them, and they know they're being heard, that really goes a long way. So thank you very much for doing that. I think it was yesterday, I think Frank and I and Rod had a meeting with the Springfield Mayor and the new city manager regarding the Glenwood issue. And I think we're moving in the right direction. We're getting close. And I think Frank and the sub-general manager have worked out a deal. So I think we're going to hopefully put that to bed. And lastly, Commissioner Maital, thank you very much for rationalizing 30 years of my behavior. I recorded what you said about dropping everything and doing that. So I'm going to make sure I play that back to my wife this evening. Thanks.
All right. Frank, I can't see you, but I assume that you might have a thing or two to say, as well as provide us a bit of a COVID update.
Sure. Thank you, President Maital, commissioners. Appreciate your comments this morning. I don't have a lot to add to what commissioners just said. I've been involved with a number of these conversations and appreciate the board's support. And to Commissioner Brown's comments, really appreciate staff looking into the opportunities that come up when we have someone in the community who has a need that maybe we haven't fulfilled. And I think that's an opportunity to learn just that much more. So thank you. I did want to give the board... The board has asked for regular COVID updates, so I just have a very quick COVID update to go through. Go ahead, next slide, please. These take just a moment to load and get going. But one of the things that we do regularly is we, on a bi-weekly basis, so twice a week, we get a very detailed report from all of the different health authorities that we combine, looking at trends both from local, Lane County, by ZIP code, all the way up through state levels. And so we're able to monitor a number of different things. This one is particularly noteworthy because you'll see that the data on the right side of the screen there was put together to align with Governor Brown's statistics and requirements for school openings. And so there's a requirement around the case rate per 100,000, both at the Lane County level. And then there's positive test rates, which has both a state component and a county component. This is important to us as a utility because about half of our employees have children who are school-aged. And so we know that this is of particular interest to both our workforce and the community. And so this is just something we incorporated very directly. As far as fast response, we asked for this particular piece of data to be included in the report last Friday, I believe it was, and our report on Monday had it. So, you know, again, great work by staff to look at these particular issues. And this is just something that we monitor as input to our COVID response as a utility. Next slide, please. As a quick reminder, we kind of broke our response into four different phases. Really, an initial response, which was kind of a triage approach, reintegration, which is where we are now, reintegrating our workforce into more of a new, normal community recovery, which we'll talk about a little bit more, and then replenishment of all of the particular resources that we might have to use to get through this. Next slide. Just the very quick update, just snapshot. We are reintegrating. It's a mix of both telecommuting and office work. That's pretty much been steady levels through July. We have, at this point, good inventories of various PPE, whether that's including, you know, fire retardant masks, for example, since we work with electricity, sanitizing materials, et cetera. We also... We do have very high-efficiency filtration, meets all of the CDC guidelines, and then ASHRAE, which is the standard for... Which goes along with HVAC equipment as far as recirculation. And we have within-day, daily and weekly protocols around cleaning, which includes the misting scheduled roughly weekly, every week or two. And so we're in a regiment around hygiene. We're continuing to see consumption declines that we can track to COVID. It's about 3% or 4% at this point. Overall, the electric utility is down on the year. Some of that's weather-related. Some of it's related to a couple of key accounts. A little bit of improvement in July, some of that because the heating-degree days, weather-related consumption was a little bit higher. Haven't seen a... Haven't seen a lot of impact yet on water, although really the summer is the key and the highest usage points there. So not, haven't seen a lot there. And then we are continuing to offer payment programs for customers. You can see our aging there. It's, it's actually a little under 1,900 now. It's more like 1,800 accounts, which would be in a typical collections process, roughly about $1.3 million. That's been steady, pretty steady for the last, I guess, 30 days or so. We have had a number of customers sign up for the extended payment terms and other options that we have, but then new ones also cycle into that, to that number. So we're continuing to work through that as well as offer direct aid for customers. Go ahead with the next slide. And that was the quick update. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions if the commission has it, and if not, we can move on. But I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that we were continuing to work safely. Safety is the highest priority for our workforce as well as the public. And I have to commend our, our entire staff for how they're approaching working under new conditions.
Well, I'll open up a quick queue. Looks like John Brown would like to jump in. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Frank, thanks for that information. Just a quick question about the delinquencies. I think the last month we had 3,000 and now we're down to 1,900. How does 1,900 relate to a normal month?
So I'll just, I'll give you a snapshot of last year, John, since it kind of accumulates over time. Last year, at this time, we were about 300. So 300 accounts versus now, it, you know, it's, it was at 3,000. We've been very aggressive in customer outreach. We've now gotten that down to below 2,000, but you have to compare that with last year at this time, which was about 300.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Schlossberg, just so you know, I can't see you right now. So if you happen to be raising your hand, I don't know it.
I don't see her hand up. I can see her.
All right. Well, thanks, Frank. I think we'll close that out. We'll move on to our next item. That's the approval of consent calendar A. Before we do that, let's see, Mindy, it would be helpful for me if you just said something because then you'll pop up onto my screen and I'll be able to see all of the commissioners.
Okay. Here I am.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Well, approval of consent calendar A. Before we do it, I'll just remind folks, we've changed our process a little bit. These are routine items, and in this instance, it includes the minutes and two contracts, one for Pacific Excavation and one for Wesco Distribution. Does anybody want to pull for discussion, any of those? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve? One from John Brown, a second, a second from Commissioner Schlossberg. Any discussion? Okay. Well, all those then in favor of approving consent calendar A, please raise your hand and speak the word aye. Aye?
Aye.
Dick, I assumed you were in that. Actually, now I don't see you, but I'm pretty sure you, I heard you in there. If you, if I made a mistake, let me know. We will move on to consent calendar B, and in this case, it includes one contract, an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Eugene and Resolution 2022, which makes some slight revisions to the customer service policy. Anybody like to pull for discussion, any of those items? Okay. Well, in that case, do I hear a motion to approve, again, from John Brown, a second this time from Commissioner Carlson? All, any discussion? All right. Well, in that case, all in favor of approval, please raise your hand once again and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. I think I heard from everybody again. It looks like it is approved unanimously, and we can move on to our next item. That's general business items. And up first, under that category is the electrification impact analysis report, and I believe it's Susan Ackerman and Megan Kapper. And I will put 30 minutes on my clock, and I'll hold it up once in a while so you can see what it says.
Well, thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm really, you can go ahead and move it to the next one, Ann or Holly, I'm sorry. This is what we want to do tonight. We have been working diligently on this study now since February, March is when we took this one on. And what we wanted to do today is to share with you our early findings from that analysis, provide some context for it, talk about next steps, and then receive some feedback from you. Just a quick reminder, all of the information you're going to be getting tonight comes from that 40-page report that was in your board packet. It's also accessible through the agenda. And so today is just the thumbnail, or tonight, I guess, is just the thumbnail of what is already in that larger report. This is just to remind everybody about the scope of what it is we were studying. It includes not just what we studied, but possibly as important, what we did not study. We are looking for the impact of electrification on eWeb's portfolio and its load situation from the transportation sector electrification and the building sector electrification. In transportation, we looked only at passenger and light duty vehicles. We did not study commercial freight vehicles or transit buses. In the building sector, we looked only at domestic space and water heating, and by domestic here, I mean residential and commercial space and water heating. We did not study industrial space and water heating or industrial processes. And of course, the context for eWeb doing this study is that climate change strategies around the country and locally as well tend to focus on electrifying transportation and buildings as a way to meet goals. And we think what we're learning in this first phase of this study is that eWeb is well situated to assist the community with those goals. We are part of a larger regional power grid that is relatively clean because of our great hydro base. So that's helpful. We also have as a region and as a utility, a legacy of energy efficiency programs. And we are also on an average energy basis. eWeb is long for a while, which means we can, we can adapt to some of this load as it comes. Next, please. This is just a reminder that this, this study is part of and one of eWeb's 2020 strategic goals. This goal actually started the year as an electric supply planning goal, but we converted this in, I guess it was March or February, based on the communities and the board's interest in the impact of electrification on the region. And so that's what we're doing here. We would have needed to have done this analysis in any event for our future IRP plans, but this gives us a really good head start on it. Next one. This is just a reminder that this, and I'll probably remind you five times before the evening is over, but this is a preliminary analysis. So this is phase one of our larger analysis. And the final report for phase one will come to you in October. Between now and then, though, we still have a certain amount of work to do, including a deeper dive into the impact of electrification on our portfolio and resources. We haven't yet fully studied the impact of electrification under peak load scenario, a 1 in 10 peak load impact, so we need to do that. We will be scrubbing our assumptions carefully and developing our methodologies and benchmarking with other entities. And in particular, we will be clarifying our findings with Northwest Natural to make sure that our assumptions are correct. So we'll be working with them on that. The real point of this analysis, though, is to develop an analytical model and tool that the utility can use for all of its resource planning and its community outreach interest in decarbonization. That tool will allow us to examine, once we have it in place, it'll allow us to examine all kinds of futures and scenarios for decarbonization that people want to look at. But it will assist us with understanding how the regional power grid will evolve over time, and it'll assist us with IRP planning and developing customer-facing programs. So this is really a work in progress. That's what we're hoping to get out of this. Next one, please. So this slide begins, the high-level impacts that we thought were worthy of pointing out to you. The first is that, based on our early look at this data and our early study, the pace and impact of electrification on eWeb's system appears to be manageable. And what we mean by the word manageable is that we have an obligation to serve all load that presents itself to us, but the pace of electrification tends to be slow enough that we can adapt to it. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we're long on an average energy basis. We also have a distribution system that at first blush, it appears there is enough capacity on our distribution and transmission system that we can adapt to this load as it presents itself. So what this graph does is it shows you the cumulative impact of electrification on our average load situation up through 2050. Assuming a very high level of electrification, it looks like it would add about 55 average megawatts to our load. That's about 20% of our current average load. Next one. This is another important early finding. The most important one is probably that the, the real opportunity for eWeb for electrification and carbon reductions in the community come from electric vehicles. We, we did look at space and water heating conversions in this graph, but the truth is EVs have a great market share potential under this study because there are very few electric vehicles in our service area right now as a percentage of the total that could be. That is not true for space and water heating, which is why it ends up being a smaller opportunity for us than the EVs. We, we serve 75% of the residential and commercial space and water heating market right now, and so it limits our opportunities to do more of that in the future. Next slide. This is something else to understand, that the technology we're assuming for these conversions really matters. If residential space heating load were to convert to a lower efficiency technology, like a baseboard electric technology, for example, the impact on our load over time could be very significant, as you can tell from the gray bars on this graph. On the other hand, if the load converts to more standard efficiency or even some of the higher efficiency equipments that are out there, that would cut the impact on eWeb's loads by more than half. So it's substantial and it's really important. Next slide. It's hard to anticipate the effect that electrification of vehicles would have on eWeb's load in part because the adoption rates are so uncertain. You can see from this graph that the potential for EV adoption ranges from a low of 3% of total vehicles in 2050, all the way up to a very high percentage, 100% of vehicles in the service territory would be electric. What we have done in our analysis is we have assumed that, we have assumed what we call a high-growth scenario. That's that gray dotted line, and it assumes that 45% of the vehicles will be electric by 2050. We got the 45% number from E3. E3 is a nationally-known consultant that does a lot of work with organizations and jurisdictions around the country on deep decarbonization strategies. And this 45% assumption that E3 uses came from an assumption that we would be into a high decarbonization economy and a high decarbonization strategy politically that would result in that 45%. So that is, that's the figure we used in making our assumptions. The orange solid line is the City of Eugene's forecast for electric vehicles. Next slide. Before we turn to talking about the decarbonization impact of electrification, I just want to put this slide up here. The graphic here also comes from E3, and it is just really to remind everybody that electrification is only one of many strategies to decarbonize the power sector. Next slide. We might spend some time on this slide, but this, this is the slide that describes the elect, the carbon savings from electrification. I think what's the good news here is that electrification really does lead to carbon savings. But there's something to understand, too, on this slide. This is the other important point, which is that even assuming a high level of electrification, we are still, there's still quite a gap between what we would achieve through this electrification in terms of carbon reduction goals and what the city's carbon reduction goals are. We don't know why that is yet entirely. We are going to be working with the city to double-check our assumptions and make sure we understand what their goals are and the basis for those goals. But I just wanted to remind you, going back to that previous slide, that electrification is only one strategy for reducing carbon. So I don't know to what extent other strategies are not considered in our analysis, but would be considered in the city's analysis. Next one. So starting to wrap things up here, I guess the important considerations are, again, the results are subject to change between now and final publication, which will happen in October. We are really trying to make sure that we have our assumptions correct, correctly identified, and that we are performing the right amount of quality assurance and quality control on our data to make sure that it's a solid, data-driven result. The other, I guess, high-level conclusion is that carbon impacts in the later years, say 2030 and beyond, are very uncertain, and it really depends on a lot of these assumptions. So next slide. The purpose of this slide is just to give you a feel for where this study fits in all of eWeb's electric supply planning processes and also our upcoming contract expirations. We are in phase one right now. You can see that in the star in the bottom of the graph. We will release our final report on phase one in October. We begin phase two in 2021 and hope to have that out to you then. The phase two focus will be a deeper analysis of the economics to eWeb of, and others of electrification. We will take a deeper dive into mitigation measures that might be necessary. And by mitigation measures, what I mean here are the sorts of customer-facing programs that would help us mitigate potentially negative impacts on our loads and our other customers from electrification. We will also be doing a deeper dive into the availability of eWeb's infrastructure to adapt to this. And finally, we'll be looking at the regional resource mix over time. There was that earlier question that came up in response to public comment, President Mattel, about solar assumptions to be made. And I would just say that those are, that's an important piece of work, but it probably would not happen until later on. How the grid, the regional grid mix changes over time would be something we analyze in the future in an IRP scenario, and that would include an analysis of the impact of solar load on our resource mix. So next slide. So now we come to the time where I get to stop talking, and you guys can ask me questions. There are a couple of things we're interested in learning from you. One is whether there are any assumptions you'd like more information about before we publish the phase one report in October. And then a second question is whether there are areas you'd like to see us refine or expand upon in phase two. Last slide. I put this up here because this is Megan's favorite quote, and it does seem applicable. So anyway.
Thank you.
I'm done. Any questions you might have?
Would you, whoever's controlling the slides, move it back to the question slides so everybody can just be reminded what those are, and I'll open up a queue. And before I do, I'll just stay on my behalf. I just want to thank the both of you, Megan and Susan, and whoever else contributed to the report. You know, when we started this process, when you first reported to us back in February, you know, I think they were honestly right, there was a bit of a mismatch between what it is that we felt like we needed to focus on at this point in time and where that process was headed. But you all made a, you know, a pivot, and at least for my part, I'm just really thrilled with the report that we have and the information that we're receiving. So thank you for, you know, thank you for taking that request to heart and giving us something that we can... something that we can really grapple with. I will open up a queue. Again, I see everybody but Dick, and I don't know why that is, but in any case, if anybody would like to jump in the queue, raise your hand, and I'll, and we'll start there. Dick, if you're raising your hand, I don't know, and actually now that I think, and I don't see Sonia now, I don't, so just so you know, I can see four or five people at a time, and I guess it's the last four or five people who have spoken. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you, Susan, Megan, and others. That's a very good report, and it's actually understandable. Thank you for somebody like me. Just maybe this goes in Phase 2, but have you considered what happens with, on the regional mix, if the acceleration of decommissioning of the Montana and Wyoming coal happens? I know we've talked about the potential brownouts and things in the region and a shortage. Has that come into any of your calculations or analysis, either in Phase 1 and/or Phase 2?
Commissioner Brown, it hasn't yet, but it will. That's clearly part of the analysis we'll be doing in Phase 2, and it'll include looking at how the regional resource mix evolves over time, including the shutdown of those coal plants. So yes, it is something that'll come up in the second phase of this first-phase study.
Okay, and just to tag on to that, so then we'll know that if, I mean, if those decommissionings are accelerated, how that will change our capacity and our adequacy to meet the electrification goals over certain time periods?
Yes, indirectly it will. We should have the ability, once we develop this analytical method that we are developing in the context of this study, to input many assumptions about our resource future that we can analyze, including how does the grid change and what would that do for eWeb's supply adequacy situation? That is predominantly a long-term integrated resource plan analysis, John, looking at how, how much resource we have to serve available demand on our system. That's predominantly, and Frank wants to correct me, so I'm gonna let Frank jump in.
Frank, you're muted.
I was, I was. Thank you, President Maital. So, one of the things that this type of modeling and effort will help with is that some of the issues that Commissioner Brown you referred to have to do with adequacy of resource in the Northwest under certain conditions, you know, low hydro, you don't have coal anymore. This can actually provide input into those analyses as well. This isn't just a only-for-eWeb type of result here. When people ask us, what's your load gonna look like? What's your resource mix gonna look like? Then that can provide input into things like resource adequacy. So it's a bidirectional benefit that will help us all. But we're gonna look at the makeup, you know, different scenarios and sensitivities around changes in the electric supply side going forward. Both the characteristics of generation and also the carbon attributes of generation, both of those change, and they will look a lot different in 2050 than they do today. And so we need to be able to model that, and that's gonna be part of the next phases.
Thank you. Anybody else like to jump in the queue? Actually, before we do that, maybe Travis or Ann, if you're on the line, if you have any suggestions for me for how I can sort of scroll through the other 17 folks who are apparently on the line. I only see three or four people, or five people, I guess, at a time. Sometimes it's not the other commissioners, or it depends on who was last to speak. If you have any suggestions about that.
President Maital, I think it's a function of us having the slide displayed. You should be able to see nine tiles of videos when we're not in presentation mode. Other than scrolling, I don't have any other suggestions at this time.
Okay, well, we'll make do. There's a lot of buttons here I could press, but I've been afraid to do that, so I'll make do in the old-fashioned way. Dick, perhaps you wanted to jump in the queue?
I would like to. I don't know if you can see me or not, but--
I do see you now, yeah.
At least you can hear me. So I appreciate the draft report. I also want to acknowledge that you've probably got a little more work to do to finalize it. I just got a couple of quick questions to start with. One is I just, the takeaway for me was that the amount of potential load associated with both transportation, electrification, and conversions of fossil-fuel-fired space heating, the amount of load, both in terms of peak and energy, are somewhat uncertain, but probably in a range that's manageable in general terms. And that's, that's good news, because I think up to this point, we haven't had much of an idea of how much load we were potentially talking about. Am I, am I correct, though, that the report to this point does not really address what resources eWeb would use or would be required over time, at what kinds of costs in order to serve this load, notwithstanding the fact that it's probably manageable from a physical accommodation standpoint? That's really Phase 2 work, right?
That is Phase 2, Commissioner. That's correct. I would also just add that, I guess that's it. That's correct. This is Phase 2.
I, I'm keenly interested in that Phase 2 work, in as much as that'll kind of inform us all as to what the impacts are for eWeb and our customers of moving forward on this path. I, I'm not sure, while I think we look forward to making a positive contribution to the decarbonization agenda, I'm a little reticent to fully embrace that before knowing what that really means in terms of resource requirements over time and potential impacts on our costs and our rates. I, I have no impatience around that, because I understand that's future work, but I would simply point out that I probably will not be on the board at that point to hear and appreciate the results of that work. So that being the case, let me just point out a couple of thoughts that I have for the board about some policy-level questions that we ought to all be thinking about in the meantime. One is, you know, should we, how should we approach working towards our contribution to the city's goals in light of the fact that we are all, I think, positively disposed to playing an important role, but yet not yet in a position to know what the impacts on our resource mix and our costs are? So that's kind of, you know, so how aggressively should we engage this before we've completed the Phase 2 work and are in a position, from a policy standpoint, to evaluate what that means for eWeb and our customers from a cost perspective? And then the second thought that I have, even if the rates go up, it might be that in a general sense, for the community as a whole, that this would represent nonetheless a least-cost strategy for meeting carbon objectives. So, not for debate tonight, but just as a general policy matter, as we look forward to hearing more about the costs and the impacts, is it okay for the rates to go up if this is a viable means to meet the community's carbon objectives? And I don't, I just leave that as an open question for us all to think about. Thank you.
All right, well, Commissioners Carlson and Schlossberg, I don't see you right now. If either of you wants to jump in the queue, you know, one of you go ahead, and then the other afterwards.
All right, this is Sonia. So yeah, thank you very much for the report. I read every word of it. It was fascinating. I love the pivot that you made. I think the information in it was very helpful. I mean, for me, I didn't feel like initially, when I read through the report, that there were any, you know, different assumptions I would necessarily make. It really looked to me like we were looking at where are the areas where we can go after deep decarbonization, and if the community as a whole chooses to do that, what are the switching methodologies that we take in order to do that? Which, you know, for me, that, that made sense, that the report focused on transportation and heating, because heating is actually more of the place where we have those purchases that we have to go out onto the market. There were some comments made earlier that we purchased them between August and September, and I don't think that that's the case. I think the, generally, and correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, when we go out and we have more of those market purchases, it's really when we have a lot more of those cold snaps, maybe in the summertime when we have some really hot snaps and we don't have the hydro available. But primarily, it's when we have those heating events and we don't have, and if it's, if it's in the wintertime, then we don't have solar available at that point. So for me, the report made sense in, in that, you know, I mean, for us, I'm looking at the report here, this is why I'm looking kind of off-screen and another screen, that, you know, transportation for the city of Eugene is 50% of the resource emissions. And if that's, I mean, that is a huge, low-hanging fruit that we need to go after. So for me, that, you know, that makes a lot of sense in the assumptions that are made and the focus of the report. I do wonder about the, I think the only thing that struck me in that was the feasibility of being able to get to those different places. You know, I don't, I don't know what the general rates are that people replace vehicles. If, I'm assuming that people aren't just, you know, I bought a new car, I'm gonna dump it next year just to get a new electric vehicle. I mean, people tend to use the vehicle for a while until it goes out. So I do wonder about the rates of replacement and how that matches the curve. But again, these are very minor, very minor, small details in which, you know, I think that the overall Phase 2 of the report doesn't really need to handle, it's just something that struck out to me. I mean, I think you're on the right track and appreciate all of the work that you've done so far to give us this information and make this pivot. I understand this and where we're going with it, I think is where I'm trying to indicate to. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schlossberg, if you have anything to say, I can't see you, but so if you're raising your hand out there, you're welcome to speak.
Great, thank you. So thank you for this report. I want to echo what everyone else has said. And so my takeaway, and let me know if I have this correct or incorrect, is that if we're looking at the climate recovery ordinance, based on the assumptions of things that the city wants to do, that we absolutely can handle the things that we're being asked to do. I know that there's been some suggestions out there that eWeb wouldn't be able to provide as much clean energy if we adopted all of these suggested proposals, but it looks like we can do it. So that's correct, right?
Commissioner Schlossberg, thank you for asking that question. I think it's just important to say that there is still a deeper work we need to do on the peak-load impact on our loads of electrification. And so on an average-energy basis, this looks doable, but what electrification would do for our peak-load demand and the need to serve that, we still have yet to look at, and that'll come up in October.
Okay. And I guess my other takeaway is when I look at the Eugene's reduction goals, and even if, even if we have high electrification, we're so far from the city of Eugene's targets. That's another takeaway. So I know you said you're gonna dig a little deeper to see what their assumptions are, but that's just a really huge difference. And I know that, I'm not sure what their assumptions are, but I guess this just kind of piggybacks on the meeting, meetings that we've been having, the quarterly meetings. I would just really like to see the city work a little closer with us, too, to talk about how we can decarbonize realistically. I see Frank had a comment about that.
Go ahead, Frank. I can't see you, but if you want to speak, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you, President Maital. I agree with you, Mindy. I think there's, there's a couple of things that we have to really coordinate here. You know, one of the takeaways that, that I have on any of these studies around electrification is that the fine print matters. There's a whole bunch of assumptions that get made in these studies, and we need to coordinate, in fact, we have meetings already planned, to coordinate with the city and city staff so that they can understand what our assumptions are. And simultaneously, we have meetings set up with Northwest Natural, where we want to review our assumptions around the usage cases as well. So I think it's really important that, you know, we've, we've done some educated guessing, we've done some high-level extrapolation of what we think is going on, but the details do matter. And so we want to make sure we're coordinating really well with the city, as well as Northwest Natural, because, you know, we're, we're talking really about fuel switching in both transportation and in space and water heating. And we want to make, those are very complex when you start getting into the whole way energy operates. And so you're absolutely right, we need to coordinate on, not just the city end, but also on Northwest Natural's end.
All right, well, I'll jump in. I added five minutes to our, to our topic here, just so we can finish up. I didn't have a chance to ask everybody if that's okay, but I took that liberty. I'll just add a couple of questions, and then hopefully we can wrap up. So thanks again for the, the presentation and report. A couple of things that I hear questions about frequently that maybe could be resolved in a little bit of a deeper dive in this Phase 1 is the potential for, you know, so-called climate refugees, right? So that is the idea that this is a relatively safe place to be vis-à-vis climate impacts and perhaps other parts of the country experiencing, you know, hurricanes and other kinds of storm-related events, might decide to move here at higher rates than we've experienced over the last 30 years. So I wonder if we could just do some sensitivity analysis that said, well, if, if we, I don't know what the population increase is by percentage on a year-over-year basis over the last 15 or 20 years, but if we doubled or tripled it, what would that do to our load growth between now and 2050? So we had some sense of what that might also do to us, generally speaking, is one thing I'd like to see in Phase 1. And then I have a question. If there was one other type of load that you would recommend going after, in addition to EVs and the water heating component, and what might it be? What's the, what's the other opportunity that you think is out there that we ought
Well, with regard to that last question first, Commissioner Maital, I would say that what we're really focused on is understanding how electrification would impact our loads, our resources, and our customers. And so I'm not sure that we are looking personally that this utility is in a position where we're trying to pursue an electrification impact goal. I don't think that's our role. Our role is to serve load as it comes, and we have an obligation to serve when this load presents itself. But we can certainly take a look at other opportunities. This might be a Phase 2, not a Phase 1 analysis, though, as to what the other opportunities might be.
Okay. Well, in that case, my final comment really is for the other commissioners. We have two presumptive commissioners that are joining the board and who will receive the Phase 2 analysis, and then two of us who won't be here for that. And so I wonder if the other commissioners are okay with opening Question 2 in particular up to the presumptive commissioners to provide some feedback back to Susan, so that when they do join the board, they, and three months later, they're reading this report, it reflects concerns that they may have had. Yeah, Commissioner Carlson.
I mean, if we can reach out and get feedback from them, I would be fine with that. That seems like a reasonable way to go. You get to the end of the report, and then two-fifths of your commission doesn't agree with the path you took. I think that's a very nice gesture. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe we're, our staff's in touch with them frequently. I am, at least with Matt McCray. Not hard to reach out to them. Any other thoughts about that?
I have a question, by May, just about the aspect of how far they can go in directing staff or giving staff input on how they might want to see things happen if they're not officially part of the board yet. Is that okay, Frank? So we don't get in trouble by having input from somebody that isn't duly elected yet? So we don't get in trouble by having input from somebody that isn't duly elected yet?
Thanks for putting me on the spot, Commissioner Brown. I, you know, I actually think that soliciting input is something that we do all the time, even with the general public. And the fact that we have two presumptive board members who potentially could supply some, some opinion and information is great. If they are going to actually do something that directs resources in such a way that would be a different path than this board has directed, then I would, I would raise that flag with this board. Just, and there's a little bit of judgment involved there. I'm, I'm not opposed to making sure that we understand the two new board members' perspectives on this. As long as we're not starting to redirect staff, I think that's where I would draw the line.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure we didn't set ourselves up for a challenge if somebody doesn't like what we're coming up with. Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, Commissioner Brown, I think that, you know, the one thing about this is there will be a lot of scenarios that people want to look at. And I really think the most important thing for us to do as a utility is when we speak of electrification, which is really one piece of a big decarbonizing effort, we need to make sure that the decisions that this board and future boards will be faced with do not put us in a position where we cannot handle our obligation to serve in a way that's not aligned with the values that we have around, you know, very carbon-free resources and other things. So I think that this is very informative to the paths and the decisions ahead, because we do have to look at a number of different futures. And this happens to look at the load side of that futures, of those futures. So I think that this is going to be a valuable tool, because we will be asked, well, what about this resource or what about that resource? What if this load changes or that load changes? And so I think we're putting ourselves in a position to do that.
Thanks. If you get any controversial or, you know, judgment calls, you know, you can always bring it back to the board and ask for our approval of whether or not, you know, that we want to allow staff or ask staff to move forward with specific requests by the presumptive commissioners. Last question for me, can you just clarify, Susan? Did the study include potential, what would you call it, heat from the, sorry, my, from the commercial sector? I was trying to differentiate commercial and industrial. Does domestic, sorry, I think what I'm trying to say is does domestic heat include commercial?
It does, sir, and I apologize for not making that clear. It was residential and commercial space and water heat. The study that you have, the initial report does not quite capture the commercial load potential in the way that the residential sector has, but we will capture that in terms for final publication in October.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, we are a few minutes over. My apologies primarily to John Brown. We will, are there any other questions that commissioners wanted to ask? And again, I can only see right now John Brown and Sonia, so if others have questions, you can speak up.
President Mattel?
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
I just want to make a comment about the earlier discussion about the new commissioners. I would, I would assume more broadly that we're moving into a phase where they're going to be subject to some orientation work by staff. I'm not sure exactly how we accomplish that in these days of COVID, but normally that includes briefings on salient matters that are likely to come before the board early in their tenure. There are a number of those, including issues having to do with our Upriver Hydro project. So I really see this, this issue is really no different than other things that would be folded into that orientation. And I would just encourage the board officers and the senior staff to be looking at schedules and trying to figure out how to pursue that so that as those new folks come on, not only in the case of this topic, but others, that there's as much of a seamless transition as possible. And in as much as we're not presently contemplating decisions, at least on this matter, I don't think there's formally a constitutional problem. So anyway, I support that proposal that they be brought into the discussion that way and just pointing out that there are more topics that would be of the same ilk.
All righty, any final comments from any of the other commissioners or Frank or Susan?
Yes, I just wanted to say, Commissioner, that Megan and the planning team have been working nonstop from home on this for some time, and they got a great deal of assistance from Renee Gonzalez's communications team, who helped put that report into a format that was, made it digestible to non-technical people, including me. So I just wanted to call them out and say thank you.
Well, thanks to everybody then for the report. It really is fantastic. I very much appreciate it. All right, well, we will move on, I believe, to our next item of business, and that's the E-Web headquarters building. Looks like we have the slides already queued up. We have 20 minutes on the clock, and Frank, it looks like this one's yours.
Thank you, President Mattel. This is actually a really simple presentation, because the slide you see in front of you is the actual presentation. The board was provided a backgrounder on the, on the topic. This is really a general discussion around the headquarters building and potential future ideas on disposition for the board to discuss. The backgrounder highlighted a couple of things. First of all, there is a decreasing presence from E-Web at the particular, at the headquarters building. We're presently using it because we're social distancing quite a bit, and even some of our people who need space have leveraged space that was, was kind of open space. But going forward, it's, it's not the, the best use of an asset. And so our, our presence is declining at headquarters. We also received a notification from our tenant, Phillips, that, of their intent to not continue the lease. That's through the, I believe it's October, November of 2021, although they've indicated they will vacate roughly at the end of this year. And so it brings up the question relative to what do we want to do with the headquarters building? And so it's an opportunity for the board to have a discussion around that and what some of the options might be, and direct me to either look into or come back to the board with certain information that might still be needed. So this is a situational update on headquarters building and really for the board to have an open discussion on.
All right, before I open up a queue, Anne, if it's possible, can you pull the slide down so that we can see or that I can see those nine tiles? If not, you know, I understand, that's fine. Fantastic. That helps so much. Thank you, Anne, or whoever did that. All right, well, I will open up a queue to ask questions or give feedback. John Brown, you cannot go first. You got to at least wait a half a second, give somebody else a chance. Anybody like to go first besides John Brown? Go ahead, Dick. Yeah, and you are muted, Dick.
Sorry, I apologize. Frank, could you just remind us of where we're at in terms of our surplus declaration kind of vis a vis the city's interests? I can't remember where we left that.
So, Commissioner Helgeson, the city manager and I continue to have just, just general discussions around not just the headquarters building, but the MGP site to the south of the riverfront property, as well as potential code changes that, that we're interested in. Those are ongoing. I haven't received interest specifically from the city on the building or its purchase, you know. And so I would just say that it's just general dialogue, there's an open dialogue. We did declare the property surplus. I believe that's coming up on two years ago. It was in November of two years ago. And so the clock is running on the five-year window.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to jump in the queue? Go ahead, Mindy.
Sonia, if you want to go first, your hand was, I think, raised.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay, I'm not sure if you can see. It's fine, you go and then I'll.
I see everybody now. For a moment, I couldn't, it's a little, I'm on a small screen, I apologize. But anyways, go ahead, Mindy.
So my question, Frank, is, aren't our hands kind of tied until the, either the city decides that they want it or don't want it, or that we somehow change the, whatever the rule or the code is? Like, what, what could we do?
So, there's a couple of options. The board could direct me to negotiate with the city further around terms that designed to lift the obligation to wait. That would be something that I could engage the city on specifically. That, or the board could direct and look at more of a leasing option. You know, there's a number of different disposition options in, in what's probably going to be a challenging commercial space market, given the fact that there's a lot more telecommuting going on. And so we, at present, now, there, there also could be, which I wouldn't necessarily recommend, there could be some legal options to potentially shorten that timeframe, but that's not necessarily where, you don't want to jump to the, to the legal options. I think it would be better to, to work with the city on something like that related to changing the code or lifting the obligation of interest to free us up to sell the building to whoever at that point. But I could do that if the board were to make that recommendation. I could approach the city with a more specific request.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson, would you like to say something?
Sure, so, I mean, I do remember that we had some other legal options. It sounds like the city is not moving on kind of the clarification that we need around that five-year time window. I mean, they, it's in their best interest to drag out the clock as long as possible so that they keep their options open. I mean, at this point, given that there's a probably, I mean, I don't know, I would look to John Brown for some outlook on the commercial space, because it's still a really great property, granted, in the current economic times, maybe we just, you know, we have to sit on it for a while anyway. So I don't know if our options around leasing are really that strong, or if, you know, it, it behooves us to try to move it through faster just to get it off of our hands if it, you know, if, if we can sell it and challenge the city in that way. I'm, I'm just not sure if we have the, any ability to lease either, if there's really any interest out there. So, you know, I mean, right now, it seems like it's a useful tool to be able to use to socially distance where we need to, but it is a big asset that we're holding. And I, I would really like to be able to move it through faster, but we do have a, I think there's also, the other thing that I wanted to note was that there's a pretty significant turnover, my understanding, on the city council. Well, so I don't know if that will change anything or not, but it might, it might be worth starting conversations with some of the people that could presumably, you know, be elected during the next term and see if they have any interest in kind of moving forward faster with the city's discussions. Thank you.
All right, again, I can't see everybody, doesn't look like there's anybody else who wants to speak, so we can, I think, move forward to the break. Is there anybody else out? Oh, John Brown, is there something you'd like to say?
Thank you, I really appreciate the comments. Yeah, I got a couple of questions for Frank. I mean, there's an old analogy, say you don't buy anything to eat while you sleep. That thing will eat us alive if we sit on it for another three or five years, because we have to maintain it and eat it and ensure it and do all of that, whether there's somebody in there or not. Right now, we're getting what, 45,000 or 50,000 a month that we're getting from them, and we're only renting less than a third of the building. We don't know if there's a market out there for it. Nobody's ever dealt with a COVID dynamic in the market. We've dealt with recessions and those, you know, I've been through three of them, and we've survived and things come back. I have no idea how this, this dynamic is going to change the concept of commercial space and things, but you're not going to know until we try, number one. And number two, I have a legal question, Frank. The code says that they can, they have 30 days to tell us they want it and five years to figure out how they're going to get it, but they can only take it for municipal purposes. If we lease that building today to the ABC company for five years, then they cannot acquire it for municipal purposes within that five-year timeframe. Is that a legal stance that we could take? Because they can't use it if we, if we lease it to another Phillips Corporation or something, and instead of just sitting there and having them, you know, we have, making us bury 20 million bucks in a can and put it in the backyard, we want to put that money to work, because we told the ratepayers when we sold any or all parts of the headquarters building, we'd use that to reduce the debt that we built Rock with, and I think we owe that to them. And so I don't want to sit there for another three years or four years and wait for them to figure out if they want to buy it or what they're going to do. I think it's time to, you know, time kills deals, let's move. And either rent it out to somebody, and then if we have a challenge on the legality of them not being able to acquire it because they can't use it for municipal purposes because it's leased, oh wow, we get 50 or 100,000 a month.
So, Commissioner Brown, first of all, while we are the owner, so this, this is really an option to negotiate on, a right to negotiate on their part. While we are the owner, we can make any decisions we want to around leasing, leasing terms, et cetera. So even if we had a five-year lease and they negotiated, they, they expressed an interest and they negotiated to purchase it, they would, at that point, have to agree to the terms of that lease as part of that purchase. So, you know, I think that their option is simply an option to negotiate for the purchase, and they have up to five years to close that deal. It doesn't specify the terms of that deal, other than their obligation, if they were to purchase it, they would have to use it for municipal purposes. So that's an obligation on them, not on us.
Okay, well, my point was, is if we have, let's say we've leased it beyond that five-year term, they can't use it for municipal purposes. So does that negate their right to buy it? Because their right to buy it is only subject to being able to use it for municipal purposes. We lease it, the whole thing to Phillips for five years, they've already burned up two, they can't use it for municipal purposes. So does that negate their, their right to buy it?
Yeah, the municipal purposes in the sense, isn't very well-defined in the code. There have been some, there is some case law around municipal purposes. I would think if that came as part of the negotiation and there was a lease in place, we would have to negotiate the details around whether that was, you know, acceptable to us or not. As far as a restriction, I'm not sure, that, that would have to be looked into in a lot more detail, that, that specific scenario around a municipal purpose.
Okay, well, just in my closing real quick, I'll just say, the one thing I don't want to do is let that building sit there vacant for another three to five years. Either we lease it, we sell it, we move forward, but that's a ton of money sitting there. And, you know, it's not as if we have that kind of disposable, disposable income just to say, oh, well, what's 15, 20 million bucks? It's, we need to, we need to monetize it one way or another, either through a sale or leasing. So hopefully, we can succeed in doing that.
Yep, totally understood. And in fact, the, even our usage right now is pretty minimal, and it's, it's certainly an underutilization of an asset, and that's, that's not what we want. So your point is well taken.
I see your hand, Dick. I'm going to jump in the queue and then take, do a round two. So I may have missed this, Frank, and if that's the case, I apologize. There was a text or two back and forth with Anne, just so I could try and figure out how to manage some of the stuff online a little bit better. Did you say, or if not, could you tell us how things worked out with the roundabout? My recollection is that we were not going to sell that property to them, and they needed it to kind of complete their planning, until we had secured, you know, a change of, in terms of how they viewed that, the 30 days and five years issue?
That's still the case. That's still the case. President Mattel, the, we have not sold them, that's the MGP site that I referred to. It's a, you could also count it the roundabout site. Um, we have not negotiated a deal for that sale as of this point.
And because their interests, you feel, have changed because of whatever the economic climate, whatever the reason, I suppose it doesn't matter, but they perhaps don't need it the way that they, uh, or they just don't need it right away, or what do we, what do we think is the reasoning on their side?
Um, I, I really can't presuppose, but I, I can hypothesize that the timing has changed as much as anything. I still believe that the, the roundabout is the best approach for access to that end of the riverfront. If, if you recall, a lot of their timing was driven around the, the 2021 world championships. Um, that, along with, um, just the whole development plans around the riverfront has, has been delayed some. So I think it's really more of an issue of timing. I do know that those discussions need to be resurrected. And I believe that I still am under obligation by this board for certain deal points associated with, um, the code, the MGP site, and potentially the headquarters building. So that is still in place, but it has not progressed because of timing.
Yeah. Well, what I'm hearing from the board, by and large, uh, we haven't taken a vote per se, but is an interest in getting, in moving forward and not letting it sit five years. So do you, do you have the authority you need to move, uh, you know, to explore those, or would we need to update the, um, you know, agreement that you have with the board?
I, I believe I have what is necessary to move forward. Um, I will make sure that if there's any details within question, that I would bring that back to the board likely in executive session. Um, but I believe that I have full authority to pursue those deal points as specified previously around a sale and other, uh, sales, um, and negotiate with the city. I also believe that we're in a position where we can negotiate leases as well, um, and bring those, bring those back to the board for, uh, approval, depending on, on the level. And I would think this is probably at the level that the board approval would be required. So, um, I have, I have full authority to, to take the advice of this board and I'll consider it advice at this point and move forward.
My last comment, and then I'll turn it over to Dick, is I just wanted to underscore what Sonya said, that, uh, you know, there's a new general, excuse me, a new, um, city manager, uh, over there and several new, um, counselors who will take their oaths January first or second or third or whatever it's going to be. So there might be a reason just to revisit based on the new makeup of their, um, leadership. Go ahead, Dick.
Well, I think most of what I was going to say has been subdued, uh, in, in your comments, Steve. Um, I, I don't think we're any different position on this than we were a year ago, kind of vis a vis our ability to exercise options other than another leasing out of portions of the building. So I would say, you know, that I would agree that perhaps if you're hearing direction at this point, it's do whatever we can at this point to seek as much clarity with the city as possible so that when and if we have alternatives other than those we can exercise on our own, that we're in a position to move those forward. Because without that clarity, we're just kind of sitting here, as, as Commissioner Brown says, with an asset that we can't, um, really utilize or convert to some value for our customers.
Sonya, go ahead.
I'm curious if we chose to put the building out on the market to see if we got any interest. I mean, obviously, the city has given us indication that currently they are no longer, they're not interested. Um, there's ambiguity around the five-year timeframe. Obviously, that could cause some strife with them if we, you know, if they had this assumption that they can sit on it for five years and that we can do whatever. But, I mean, it could, I mean, some of these deals take a while to go through anyway. Um, I wonder if there's any, you know, possibility there to, to kind of feel out the market and see. I mean, it could be on the market for that long anyway. I don't know. But, I mean, I would be, uh, potentially interested in, in seeing that option if we were to put it out on the market and see, you know, what sticks and if we get any interest.
I think what we've heard so far, Commissioner Carlson, is that there is interest. I, I think the challenge in going from having an interest to actually developing the details around a purchase, I don't think a legitimate buyer would take that step knowing that there's a city option, um, hanging, kind of hanging over the, the property's head. Now, that, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't explore, you know, any and all options. I, I think that to the point of this board, we don't want this to just sit there. I, I think it's, it's going to be a dilapidated asset if you do that. And so there's a sense of urgency around plotting a course and starting to execute that course. I will say also that I have a good relationship with the city manager. I think city staff and eWeb staff are working well together. And if we need to sit down and hammer out some more details around some of the real estate issues along the river, then, because there's a number of them, there's not just a headquarters building, that, that we can do that, um, in the context of understanding where both, both, um, eWeb and the city of Eugene land. So I think that there's an opportunity potentially to do that, like, I think, like it's been mentioned with some of the differences in makeup of, of the city.
I mean, it just seems to me that it would be, if we actually had an interested buyer and took that to the city and said, this is the opportunity cost you're costing the community, that it might, they might be more willing to, to move on it and that, okay, well, yes, we are going to lose out, or, or no, that's fantastic. You have this other option. Please take that for the benefit of our community. This is, this is all about the community's money and not about the city versus eWeb. And so, you know, I, I feel like their interests should be aligned with our interests if they truly are not interested in using the building for, for any city purposes. And if they're not, then at that point, then they, they, they would need to make a real decision about it. I mean, I would just bring it up with it, you know, with potentially with the city manager and say that this is something that we're, you know, potentially interested in if the other board members were agreeable to at least making that indication to see where, you know, where they stood. I mean, if this was an option that they would, you know, if, if it would cause a lot of strife within the city council or the, you know, the staff there, then, you know, that would also be a good indication of where they're at. But again, this is all for the community's best interest, not sitting on something that's going to cost ratepayers more and not be able to move forward with the city as well.
Correct. All righty, we are just slightly over time for this issue, but I want to make sure if there are any, um, the final comments that people want to make, that there's an opportunity to, um, get them in. All right, well, hearing none, we were, are scheduled to take a five-minute break by, um, my clock. It's, uh, seven oh eight. We'll come back at seven thirteen. So I'll just set a five minutes. So please be back on time. I have no way of chasing you down. All righty, looks like we're mostly back. Sonya and Mindy, if you're there, if you turn your cameras on, that's how I'll know you're here. Well, all righty then. Nice to see everybody. Hope you enjoyed your break. My cheesecake was fantastic. I hope yours was too. Uh, Frank, it looks like you are up once again, quarterly strategic and operational report, and you have thirty minutes.
Great. Uh, thank you, President Mattel. Um, I just wanted to highlight a, a few things relative to the performance of the utility for the first half of the year. Um, you know, first of all, I, I think that if you've watched this report evolve, um, it's really starting to become more and more informative and condensed and, uh, address the goals. If you're like me, you like to flip through and look at the charts and the graphs and, and see where we are. Um, I think that, uh, much of that is attributed to the management team, um, and also to supervisors who really gather up, uh, the information for, for assessment. Go ahead with the next slide. Some of, you know, this was part of a, roughly a sixty-five-page report that we provided the board, uh, relative to, um, our work in the first half of the year and, and taking a snapshot of, of the financials, of the goals. Uh, I have to admit that a lot of the first half was trying to adjust to a new operating environment, um, around COVID. Uh, we made a number of different adjustments, um, but continue to operate. We are part of an essential service. Uh, we've developed and continued to refine plans, uh, around how we respond and how we're continuing to respond, how we're helping the community. Financially, the electric utility financials are a little, I describe those as sluggish. Um, mu- much of that is driven by, um, slightly lower-than-budget, um, retail revenue. Um, so far, um, our earned income, um, numbers are a little bit below budget at about four point four million compared to budget, seasonally adjusted budget of six point eight million. Uh, the water financials are actually pretty solid. They're actually ahead of budget, uh, being at two point three million of net income versus one point six, which was the, the seasonal budget. Um, much of the water utility revenue does occur in the summer though, and so we're, we're entering the, the, the higher consumption period for water. Um, I would say that from the capital perspective, the water utility is going to finish the year projecting at a little over ninety percent of their project completion, uh, which is, which is a good number. Water is a little, or electrics a little bit behind. Much of that is because of Carmen Smith and some equipment issues, uh, that we, equipment delays that we had with Carmen, which accounted for a pretty large majority of that. Uh, we also budgeted some work on the canal, which probably will happen next year. That's the Lieberg Canal. Uh, and so those assessments, as the board knows, we'll, we'll get into and provide some updates next month on. Um, we have, I think, done some really nice work on the customer side. Um, we've provided in the first half over a million dollars of direct assistance. Uh, some of that is just, um, looking at, um, how and when we distribute funds, um, and also our energy assistance program, um, and developing new terms and conditions for customers to help them through this tough period. Uh, much of that is around extended payment terms, uh, partial energy payments, uh, really trying to keep customers customers. Um, and we, um, we suspended our, our normal collection process, including disconnects, is really the last resort. Um, up until this time, we will eventually, uh, in the month of August, have to resume, uh, our normal collection process, um, and slowly get back into that. Um, there is some exposure there for delinquency accounts, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting. Safety metrics are strong, um, some of that, uh, because of how we're working, because of the levels of work. But the, the encouraging thing about safety metrics was our, our Good Catch program, um, used to be referred to as Close Calls, but Good Catches are so far in the year, even after the first half, over double what we would typically average in a year. And so, uh, as, I think it's just bringing safety to mind, um, the, the operating environment that we're under and some of the tools that we've developed for people to provide, um, safety suggestions, really right, um, very, in a very timely way, um, has increased the amount of, of Good Catch reports that we're getting, which is really a preventative, um, action from a safety perspective. Um, water quality remains good. As you know, we, we monitor cyanotoxins and hazardous algal blooms, uh, throughout this period of time. Uh, we have seen some blooms in the reservoirs, but none have appeared at our intake so far this year. And so water quality is good. Uh, reliability of delivery is good, both on the electric side and the water side. Uh, our metrics on the electric side are below our, uh, kind of our five-year running average, uh, actually below the five-year range. And so, um, both water and electric are doing well from a reliability perspective. And we're making good progress on our strategic goals. Uh, not everything's perfect, but we are making progress on those goals. And specifically, uh, next slide, please. You know, here's kind of where we are on the, on the various goals. The, the first one is really the operational. Um, we We have a number of metrics and, and as well as board policies around how we operate. AMI is getting and, and starting to resume its installation pace. I think we made some, a lot of progress on the communications side, the radio communication side on AMI as well as some of our process mapping. We're a little bit behind on CEI. That's the customer self-service portion. We are looking to do and launch that in the, the late fall still. So it's, it's a little bit behind, but we're going to start our trial with internal E-Web customer employees, potentially even within the next 30 days or so. So that's a little bit behind, but still on track to, to do well this year and make good progress this year. Emergency management continuing to make progress. The hazardous emergency assessment on the water side is progressing. We developed some initial fire planning as well as continuing to make progress on our emergency water sites. And so that's, that's progressing well. The negotiations and working collaborative with SUB on the water resiliency is a little bit behind. It's, it's not that we're not working with SUB. We're working mostly on the Glenwood property issues, their interest around the electric side, our interest around the water side. So we're, we've made a lot of good progress on that. And, and as Commissioner Brown mentioned in his opening comments, we've also had a discussion with the city of Springfield around the future of a drinking water facility in Glenwood and I think have a pretty good understanding as to some of their interests. And so that's, while that goal is behind specifically, we are continuing to work with Springfield Utility Board just on some other subjects. Our electrification, as you saw earlier, I think that's on track. It's one of those issues where the, the more you do, the more you learn, the more you want to learn something else or something different. It's continuing to evolve and will continue to evolve. I think that really the best thing that we're developing there is a, is a system and a modeling method that we can look at all kinds of scenarios relative to the impacts of load. And then also as part of that, looking at the, the impacts on carbon. It's because we're talking about fuel switching, I think it's really important to recognize that the electric sector will look much different in 2050. We won't have carb, we won't have coal in the system. We will likely have other renewables. We may still have natural gas in the system, but also the natural gas sector will continue to evolve as well. And so if we're going to make assumptions, we have to understand the assumptions that are being made both in the electric sector as well as the, I'll refer to it as the fossilness factor associated with natural gas. There's a lot of interesting technology that's developing there too. So both of those will have to be analyzed as part of our studies going forward. We are preparing to come back to the board on Goal 7 next month to talk in more detail around the Lower McKenzie Hydro Project, specifically the, the Lieberg Canal as well as some other upriver issues. And then we are on track relative to our climate change policy. This is usually, it's written both around policy, what we're doing at the state level, also what we're doing relative to energy efficiency and conservation, what we do with internal operations and then things related to an eventual target of, of helping to have a positive contribution on CO2 equivalent. So the goals are progressing to various degrees and, and paces. But I think we've continued to make good progress under a pretty tough operating environment over the last, gosh, I, I hate to say, it's actually been five months that we're in this already. And so we've really staff and, you know, I think Susan mentioned people adapting to a different work environment, looking at different ways to operate remotely and, and in a mobile fashion. So continue to operate there. I think with that, the, the other 85 pages or 65 pages, I can't remember exactly what it was. If you have questions or comments, be happy to answer those or call on staff to answer those or get back to commissioners if there's further questions or comments. But it's, it's been a really interesting, if nothing else, it's been an interesting first half of 2020. And appreciate all the board guidance that we've received along the way. We interact in a lot different way than we used to. My breakfast expenses have, have gone way down and my lunch expenses have gone way down because I don't have to meet with, with all of you for, for in-between things. So
You mean you don't get?
Other than that, I'll entertain any questions or comments.
Alrighty, well, I'll open up a queue. Anybody like to jump in?
Look at that Frank, you really did it with those. You know, it's, it's okay. I think, you know, we're continuing to make progress and it looks like you got, you inspired a couple of them, Steve.
Looks like the awkward silence got a few people to speak up. Go ahead Dick.
I just wondered Frank, um, whether you were sensing that we were going to have to make any amendments to the budget as we move towards the end of the year or is this all being managed within the context of the flexibility you already have and that you're thinking that you can get through the year with, with the same budgetary resources that we authorized in December?
I think, you know, it's a great question Commissioner Helgason. We're, we're only really halfway through. I, I wouldn't want to say that there won't be a budget amendment, but I, I don't foresee, you know, I'm not seeing any danger signs at this point. I think we're managing pretty well within that. I actually don't know if Deborah Hart is going to correct me on this, if she's, if she's on this within this meeting, but I don't see any indications that we would be coming back to the board with a budget amendment request. I, I think we're managing pretty well with that, but there, there are still a lot of variables as you know, and, and half of the year left to go. So it's possible, but I feel pretty good about how we're managing it so far.
Remind me, um, in one area, we've, at least in the near term, we've increased our outlays for low-income assistance. Is that being accomplished by simply re-sequencing and rescheduling the money that we'd already authorized? Or are you expecting that we're going to have an overall expenditure year-end that's larger than what was originally in the budget?
So there were a couple of things. Some of it was rearranging the timing Commissioner. The other was with our, our energy assistance program where customers actually, customers contribute to the fund. We had a little bit of a balance going into the year that we have drawn down. That typically contributes about $125,000 a year just directly from customers. That entered the year with a little bit of a balance. And so we have leveraged both changing the timing a little bit and then leveraging those funds that were available through the energy assistance program. So I don't expect a budget amendment specifically for that.
Okay, thank you.
John, I think you were next.
Yeah, thank you. Just a real quick question on silt. I noticed that the silt for Q1 and Q2 in Springfield was consistent. So that's water. But the significant, like $600,000 differential between the two quarters on, to the city of Eugene, a decline from one to two. And that's 6% of a number, that's 600,000 differential. And I didn't see how that totally correlated. I, you know, I'd get lost in the weeds of all the numbers, but is that consistent with what we're seeing? Is that significant of a decline in revenues?
Yeah, some of that, yes, it is Commissioner Brown. The, there is a portion of silt that is based off of a more fixed number relative to wholesale business. And then there's a variable, a number of different variable numbers. It's a pretty lengthy spreadsheet that is used to calculate silt based on the revenue received. So there's variables between, you know, residential and commercial and consumption, but I would say in general, yes, that was based on a lower than budgeted consumption and therefore revenue number.
Okay, thank you.
I'll jump in the queue briefly. So frankly, lots of organizations that, and including E-Web, right, have frozen travel during COVID. And I, I don't have, I don't pay, I don't read the budget that closely to in, in recent years, but I think I've looked at it in the past and, you know, we have a significant travel budget so that our staff can get out to conferences and meetings happening across Northwest and, you know, DC and elsewhere. Anyways, I'm just wondering if you could comment a little bit on, on, you know, what that impact has been like for staff? And the other thing is that I think a lot of organizations are realizing like, maybe we don't need to travel as much in order to do the job that we have assigned that, that is before us. Maybe, maybe Zoom and these other go-to meetings, et cetera, work reasonably well now that we've all tested it and been forced to get comfortable with it. So anyways, just going forward or looking back a little bit, you know, what impacts have we seen from the lack of travel and going forward, you anticipate, you know, savings, I suppose, in one way? By adjust, by, you know, by not picking it up at the pace that we had last year?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Mattel, it's, it's when we started to look at next year, especially given that we're forecasting some revenue decline because of economic fallouts from, from the pandemic. We looked at areas that were really kind of natural opportunities to make adjustments in our expenses. And travel was one of those. And, and we have seen and are, are seeing this year a lot lower travel budgets because a lot of organizations have adapted. You know, if you're, if you're participating in seminars and trade organizations, most of those have converted to some virtual method and have committed to doing that at least through the end of the year. We have also projected that that's going to continue. And so we have, have in our budgetary process that we're working on now, looking at significantly lower travel budgets for 2021. And, and I want to say roughly 80% cut in travel for 2021. There's some opportunities where you're talking about a high degree of collaboration or partnership work or even potential looking at training associated with certifications that you might, may or may not be able to get online. Those we have a little bit of funding for. But you're absolutely right. I think I've, I've seen a lot of, you know, I've been on, I don't know, you know, it's, it's, it's an odd environment because it seems like I never stop working. It's, you know, one Zoom meeting to the next and then you go to Teams and then you go to go-to meetings and then, you know, you just go from one to the next. And I think people have started to adapt to that. So I absolutely agree. We've, we've seen a significant decrease in that. I think we're starting to adapt to it. In some types of work, it's maybe even more productive than it was before. You have the ability to concentrate, but we are working definitely on our budgets for next year. And that's one of the opportunities we're going to leverage.
Yeah. Well, I'll just throw out the comment that I, I think that, you know, given how, you know, that's just one very interesting and I would say somewhat positive impact of COVID. Lots of organizations that took travel for granted. It just, it's just a fact. You just, you can't stop it. Are, you know, forced to reassess and realize no, things can work just fine or reasonably as well without. So I, I guess if that's the case, then it, it puts the pressure on us to justify the increase in travel budgets in, if it, you know, whenever it, we get the all-clear from, you know, the powers that be, the feds and state that, and the airlines and whoever else, the travel is safe again. Okay, fine. But if we've proven to ourselves that we don't, that we can do our jobs reasonably well or just as well without that, then I guess I would, I would, I would put it back on you all to, to be clear with the board as to why and if two years from now, travel budgets have to resume to what they were in 2019.
Yeah, the other thing that we're seeing Commissioner Mattel, which is a, I'll say the, the inverse reaction to that is that there, when you look at online activities, online trainings, we're seeing subscriptions going up. So I think people are recognizing that virtual trainings have value. You're avoiding travel costs, so therefore you may be willing to pay more on the virtual side. So we're, we're, we're not seeing a total savings in, I'll say, a training and travel. We're saving in travel. Some of that on the online side is, is not being totally offset. But so there's, there's some push and pull there.
I understand. Commissioner Carlson.
Great. They brought up the, the budget for supporting people who need assistance during this time. Now, I know we have, in the past, we've had the Run to Stay Warm. I'm assuming that that's canceled. Are we doing something that's somewhat of a community outreach fundraiser going into the fall? Or is that something that's also tabled?
Yeah, Commissioner Carlson, I'd actually don't know on that. I'll have to follow up with the communications team. We might need to be renamed the Run to Stay Safe instead of the Run to Stay Warm. But, you know, we've
Zoom to stay warm?
Yeah, we, we had switched the, up to the point where you have a fever. You can Run to Stay Warm, but if you get a fever, that's, that's too much. You know, we, we did contract out the, the management of that, that race. I, I don't know exactly where that's at, but I can follow up with staff and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Other comments, questions for Frank? And Mindy, I don't see you right now. So if you're raising your hand, sorry, I'm not seeing that.
I don't have any other comments other than great job, mostly staying on track, given these very strange and challenging times.
And I'll just maybe end, as my sense, we're about to close out this session with, you know, kudos for the quality of the report, not just this time, but in general, as you said at the outset, that it has evolved. But all under your leadership, we didn't have anything like this at all until you became the general manager. So just recognizing that and so the, adding it into our, into our calendar four times a year and continuously improving the quality of the report itself. It, it really is a fantastic addition to, you know, the board's view of, you know, of what's going on. And I, and I suspect it's really useful for you and leadership and a range of staff up and down the organization. So thanks for the effort to Frank and all of the folks, because I know there must be many of them who contribute to the quarterly report.
Yeah, there are a lot of contributors. Thank you President Mattel. And, and I think that what it does is, is pulls us back to the mission at hand and the goals at hand. And it's, it's a nice way to keep us on track. And so thanks to, thanks to you for those comments. We appreciate it. But there's a lot of staff that really do contribute to this and, and pull it all together. So thanks for that.
Alrighty, we have one last seventh of item for the evening and that's the annual strategic plan review. It's another 30 minutes and Frank, once again, you're front and center.
Yeah, it's, I guess you get a lot of dose of me this, this time around and I'll, I'll see if I can work on that going forward. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So just, you know, as a reminder, we, we entered the, the strategic plan late in 2017. This board was instrumental in its development. Possibly with the exception of, of Commissioner Schlossberg who, who kind of assumed a role to, that this was the strategy when she joined. It's part of the reason for the recommendation going forward to not look at any really substantive type of changes until a new board would come on and take a fresh look. But I think there's a number of things that, like I said, it started in 2017. We're continuing to push through a number of different phases. And, and really a lot of the work we're doing now is, is around even things that you see around electrification and understanding the consumption side of, of what we do. Go ahead with the next slide. I think the, just in general, working with, with the board, getting your comments, some of them formal, some of them informal, some of the strengths and weaknesses of the present plan and, and process that we're in. The two, you know, the two big ones, and in fact, the entire plan was really based off of the challenges and the issues that we saw the utility is going to be faced with over the next decade. And so the fact that those are still relevant is, is probably a natural outcome, but I, I think that's a strength of the plan. It wasn't something to just make us feel good and, and about something and, and have some fancy words, but we thought it was relevant to the decisions at hand. And it's, you know, breaking it up into phases. There's always a little bit of grayness between the phases, but I think that we're, we're seeing progress through the plan that way. It's biting off chunks that we think we can It's biting off chunks that we think we can work on in in kind of a near term versus long term approach. And then we feel pretty good about the definitions associated with safety reliability, the affordability piece. Uh we think those are are pretty easy for us to understand and to to uh qualify and quantify. Um some of the weaknesses, um emergency preparedness is different than resiliency and we see that resiliency, which which we're actually seeing now involves workforce resiliency uh and financial resilience resiliency and we we think there's an opportunity to expand the resiliency piece of this a little bit and not just talk about emergency preparedness and disaster recovery, but expand that to become more about across the utility resiliency, which would mean your IT systems, your communication systems, your your people, your finances. So we think that's an opportunity for us. Um we think that as we go through these phases, the intent was as we kind of work through one phase, we would provide more definition to the specific actions that would come out of the next phase. And we think there's um maybe phase two, which is kind of where if if we're between phase one and phase two, there's an opportunity to describe some more specific programs or actions that we would want to include in phase two. We think that that's that's just an issue of developing things that are measurable and um quantifiable as you go through this. And so we probably the the more we forget, if we were to just leave the the plan stagnant, which was not really the intent, the more we work through that, the more it it becomes a little bit disconnected. And so we need to bring it back to some actions. And then um it's always one where um the the role, once you get past the delivery of electricity and water, uh we have a a mission that says that we're going to do this consistent with the values of our community or our customer owners. And that's always a a tough one to define, especially in Eugene where there's there's lots of values and there's there's uh sometimes competing values and how do we manage our way through things that aren't directly related to uh the delivery of electricity and water and maybe how we deliver electricity and water and and to what to what method or to what um resolve we do that. So that's one where I think as we go forward and and have to figure out what does that look like? Uh we are a community owned utility and so uh the role we play in the community beyond just the affordable, safe and reliable delivery of electricity and water. What does that mean? What does that look like? I think there's always opportunity to to work on that piece. Um that does impact how we do our work. So some opportunities, some strengths, some weaknesses. Um go ahead with the next slide, please. Kind of brings us to um really looking for some input from this board as to if you see those same opportunities, if you if you see other things that we might want to be looking at more specifically. Uh we thought that, given that um Mindy wasn't involved in the first in the development of this plan and we had two new board members coming on, that um it would be appropriate to really take a little bit deeper dive into what the next sort of revision of this would look like. Uh next, I don't mean revision, maybe more of a a fresh view of this um sometime in 2021. Um but not to exclude this board from from providing direction if if there's things that we think we're really missing and um kind of where you see the strengths and weaknesses, if you feel that same way. So um asking for your input, your guidance, um if if that seems logical to the board, um and whatever other uh wisdom that you can um provide would be helpful. That's it, President Mattel.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll open up the queue. Um I can see most everybody except for Dick right now. Go ahead, Sonia.
Uh I mean, I'm I'm personally still committed to the current strategic plan. Uh I do appreciate you raising the kind of the ambiguities around those certain topics. I can see where you're coming from there and I do appreciate the thought around more of the resiliency perspective, maybe not necessarily emergency preparedness um in the current situation that we're in. I am very thankful that we have gone through a lot of this work because I think it it set us up for a good situation for here. There's a lot of overlap there, but we could probably take that further and um and see other ways that how we can be more flexible for the community's sake. So I don't know, I I don't personally feel like we need to revise it right now, but I do appreciate the thought that we would do a kind of a of a broader review of the plan with the new board in 2021 as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schlossberg.
Yes. So thank you, um Frank, and also thank you for bringing up the possibility of just potentially revisiting this um in 2021. I think the thing to me that seems the biggest challenge is that um where the weaknesses lie, the responsible and community values. It's just there's they're not um quantitatively defined, right? Where the other ones, safety, reliability and responsibility, there's quantitative measures that you can look at to see if we've met them. I think that maybe in 2021, when we have um the new board members, maybe we can look a little bit more into their responsible or environmental one, because that is something that we could maybe set some tangible goals in. And I just think the community value is always going to feel a little squishy because really, we are the the community and the thing that makes brings community to it is that we have an elected board. And I think that whatever the makeup of the board is, is really going to influence that. I mean, hopefully, we're representing the customers and so those values are coming through, but I just don't know that we can define that other than just by saying we have a publicly elected board that represents our customers. So that is all.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioners. I appreciate the the first two pieces of feedback. I I think that the you know, the the goal of a strategic plan, which is really to help set up the organization to be successful um ongoing and sustain that success. I in in the private industry, the goal of a plan is to develop a what's referred to as a a sustainable competitive advantage. This one, because of the structure, is almost a sustainable community advantage. And so there's that, there is that community piece. Uh part of it is that if people don't like what they're doing, uh they have a board that that they can work with directly. Uh that's a piece of it. And if they don't like what the board does, they can reelect new board members, I mean, that that represent the community. I mean, that's that's a piece of it. But we also can point to certain things that we do as a utility that relate directly to how we support the community that that goes beyond delivering um electricity and water um in the way that we do, you know, environmentally, consciously, um affordably. There's things that this board is committed to around funding educational programs, for example. Uh we offer a a great deal of very direct customer assistance that doesn't rely on the state or the federal government. Um that comes through our rate base, which means our community is also paying for it. So we have to manage that correctly. So there's some things that go beyond the governance part. Um but you're right, those seem a little squishy. They they probably are. And I think part of what is challenging in Eugene is is there are a lot of values that people express very openly and passionately in Eugene. And it's up to this board um to make recommendations kind of way through that. So um if we could at least uh even look at some of the tools that we would use to guide those suggestions, I think that would be helpful. So so thanks, thanks so far.
Other comments or concerns? Dick, if you're interested in speaking, I'm sorry, I don't see you right now. Well, um doesn't appear that we have a um anything else uh um to add to it. I'm I'm happy to largely um be quiet. Maybe that's what Dick is thinking about as well. It's sort of what we were invited to do. Thank you, Frank. Um but I think that makes sense to give the the those who are remaining on the board and those the two new folks who will join it um the opportunity to kind of lead that um when the time comes. I I will just say one thing that um in response to the whether or not we had a substitute resilience for disaster, um I forget the wording, we had disaster recovery. I uh I I guess I'll just say I'm not so sure I'm in favor of that. I mean, we are, I I I heard what you said about resilience and that it's a more kind of widespread term and it can be applied to our financial metrics and and our workforce, but we're already doing things to make the workforce more resilient and we already have policies in place um to guarantee uh or to help us weather any number of financial storms that may hit us, right? There's a lot of things already in place there. I worry that that term um we are back up, we have done, I I feel like a pretty good job in the, at least in the eight years that I have been here in in focusing. Um and that's been probably the the theme that has um you know, most strongly resonated over the period of time that I've been here. And we were not super focused um honestly be um prior to that, and that was the source of a lot of problems. And so being really clear about what we do and what we don't do has given us a lot of focus and that's turned into a strategic plan in the headroom and all the opportunity that comes with it. Resilience, uh and you're talking to a guy who's a sustainability director, so I'm aware of, you know, the things that I'm, you know, that I'm touching upon. You know, is open to a lot of interpretation and and suddenly if if we open it up um our terminology in that way, we'll see lots of proposals um uh you know, becoming our way under the banner of resilience when that isn't necessarily um when we I think we could afford to focus more tightly than just that broad term. So you know, for me, a thing that the community really seems to, a a problem that we have had and deserves a lot of focus is storm response. And we have gotten a lot better at it, but we need to get a lot better still. Um and I would prefer to see us tighten our focus as a um as opposed to relax it with a term like resilience.
Yeah, Commissioner Mattel, thanks for that. I I do agree that what makes a plan or in in fact, the planning that's behind the plan successful is a combination of of focus and then the alignment within the the organization that that can create. So uh I I think that that's why this plan was a very condensed plan relative to the previous plans that the utility developed. And it was a lot around focus. Not that that's the only thing we care about. Um but I think when you look at trying to set yourself up and get results that align with some future position, um you have to be able to align an organization, especially one of the sides of E-Web. And to do that, you have to focus and then you have to be able to communicate behind it. So I I do appreciate that perspective and and I think that's worth considering.
I I like the tight focus and if if you or you know, staff came to us and said, hey, in order to better uh you know, to do storm response or disaster recovery or whatever you want to call it, um better, well, we need, you know, we need a new bit of IT infrastructure or we need to, you know, send, train our workforce in a certain way or any number of other things that might seem tangential initially, but but we're um but we're really a part of a larger response. So um to make our recovery from disasters that much more nimble. I I think the board would accept that and enthusiastically. So I I don't see those terms as um as limiting us. Uh I I see them as really useful because the thing that the the community wants is, and that has been expressed and we've uh multiple times, better, faster, um you know, more 21st century style um recovery from the the kinds of disasters and um events that we um are gonna become unfortunately acquainted with that much more in going into the century.
Yeah, I I think it's it's especially a challenge, Commissioner. As as you become what might be viewed as more successful as an organization, you're getting more results. You're you're seeing uh success. Um the more things people want you to do, which which actually creates the challenge of lack of focus. And so um I do think that focus is important. Um I know that the the senior executive team hears that uh pretty regularly. Um and and I I agree with that. I think the challenge, especially when you start talking about um board turnover, is that it people want, they bring in lots of ideas, they want more. And so we're going to have to figure out what that looks like. And and I think that's going to be um an interesting challenge going forward is how do we keep our focus on the things that we really think are important and not get distracted by the things that other people might want us to do. Um and it's a compliment to be asked those things. It's just, it's a, it's a very challenge. It's a big challenge to an organization when you get fragmented in a lot of directions.
Yeah, I I agree. Knowing when to say yes and knowing when to say no are too big, uh really important all the way around. Well, um we have some time left in the session, but I sense that folks are have asked all the questions that they would like to ask unless I'm missing anything.
Commissioner Helgeson wanted to make a comment.
Sorry, Dick, you're the one I can't see right now. Go ahead.
Just on that last point, I think the challenge for the board, when you engage that kind of a discussion, is to agree on what the priorities are. And that means you can't do everything, the sum total of what everybody wants to do. You have to not only focus, but you have to narrow that down to a handful of things that you can actually put the energy of the organization behind, which means that you have to be willing as board members to kind of negotiate a set of priorities that um regrettably um uh usually involves some or all having to let go of of something. So um I think that's the challenge in in achieving the kind of focus uh is in narrowing down the number of things that as an organization, you're going to try to work on over a period of time because um as capable as E-Web is as an organization, if you get spread too thin and try to take on too many things all at once, you're you're not going to be uh successful. And beyond that, there's nothing really that Steve or I can contribute because the next time you talk about this, um it'll be in that environment where you're looking at it anew.
Well, thank you, Commissioners and
There's always public testimony, Dick.
Yeah, there's, there's always that opportunity. Yes, uh um I I think it's been one of the strengths of this board is the ability to to align and in some cases, focus. Uh I have no reason to think the next board won't uh approach it the same way. I I think the the organization is poised to do that. And um you know, I think the fact that this plan came together, especially for for you two who are are moving on to better and bigger things, um I think that's a um a real attribute that you can point to that highlights your contribution. So um thank you for that.
All righty, uh final, I I know I keep saying the same thing, but because I can't see everybody, I feel like I keep on having to offer the opportunity for folks to speak. Uh Sonia, you're good? John Brown, I don't see you right now.
Um I'm good. I had a just a technical question, but I'll ask Frank later.
Okay, fair.
Two big ones. Thanks.
Okay, fair enough. All right. Well, we will move on to our final item and that's uh correspondence and board agendas. Frank, it starts with you.
Yeah, there was um I believe just one piece of correspondence. It was an update for the board on um our fiber system. Um there was also a little bit of an update on um the comments from the last meeting and requests from the board around a little bit of a an update on what Sub was doing. And so that was provided as correspondence. I don't know if you have any questions on that. Um I guess I would open it up if if you do and if you don't, we can move on to agendas.
Uh I I have just a quick question. So if a private, you know, residence, business, whatever, outside of the downtown network wants um to um but let's say, but within some kind of reasonable proximity, wants to try and connect, is there an avenue for them to do that uh as long as they're willing to pay for the extension of the fiber?
Generally, there's not a mechanism at this point, Commissioner Mattel. Um as you know, we've, we have offered um our spare fibers, um dark fibers uh first and foremost to a public entity such as school districts um and city, county for those purposes. Um we we have not made those available to um contractors or suppliers for commercial or that. We have a few commercial accounts. I won't, those have been a a relic of history primarily, but we have not made fiber available for people to then light and provide um ISP type of services.
Yeah. All right. Other questions, concerns on that issue? Yep, Mindy? Go ahead.
I would just like to, I said this earlier, but just to get an update, some information what the city's done around their research into fiber and just to kind of piggyback on this report. So I don't know if that's possible to get that maybe in one of the upcoming board packets or something, but that would be great.
I think Commissioner Schlossberg, we've, we know that the city is working on some grants and we've actually had some discussion around those grants. I don't know much more about their project. I guess we can look into it as part of those discussions with the city.
Yeah, I think I would appreciate that as well. And my sense is that at some point, right, whether that, you know, we want to, folks in the city beyond those who are already served by our fiber, you know, are gonna want and need and expect more. And it could be provided by us, it could be led by the city. There, you know, there are already private suppliers of those kinds of things. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be led by us, but I get the sense of like some angst out there as to where is, where is this initiative gonna come from and how might it develop? And, you know, to our community responsibility, our squishy community responsibility, that is, I would like to have, you know, some kind of response in the works to that question. Right now, it's like, it's just, it's so murky, I have no sense of where that would come from. That, you know, the move to faster internets, hookup speeds and better service for folks. But I, yeah, my sense is that we owe that to ourselves and the community to start thinking about that. It doesn't mean we have to act on it right away. I know there's lots of risk, financial and otherwise, to it. Yes, Commissioner Schlossberg?
I guess one thing to add to that is that I also think it would be interesting to open up that conversation with the school districts as well. Because like Richie Weinman commented in his public testimony, there's just a lot of kids and teachers out there that during these types of times really need internet connection and it's not there. And that's one of the struggles that the school district is having. And it's not just related to pandemics, but it's when there's weather emergencies and things like that. So it just might be of interest to bring them into that conversation if we go that direction.
Yeah, I think, Commissioner, thank you. The issue with the schools isn't so much the schools, it's the people who aren't located in the schools. Given that the schools, in most cases, have fiber connectivity already. In many cases, E-Web fiber, not in all cases, but in many. So it's those creating of hotspots or some other kind of interconnectivity. This is one of those areas that I think if, if the board wants us to really take a deep dive into it, I will have to get with staff and understand what an assessment like that would look like. There's a ton of different business models around the country relative to fiber, some through utilities, some through cities. We also know that there are private entities who do this, who are competition in that case. And so this is one of those things that, and it may be best handled as a partnership with the city, a lot like we did downtown, where we leveraged some infrastructure and then the city actually paid for the installation. Some type of partnership might be the best way to do it. But if it starts to get too deep, I'll have to come back to the board and say, okay, what do you really want to do here? This is now gonna take a, almost a new business model kind of approach. I think Commissioner Carlson had a question.
Oh, sorry, Sonya, now you're the one who I can't see. Go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things. One, so the school districts by and large have this capability. Does that mean then that the fiber is run out to the school district? So it's technically spread out throughout the community? It's not just in the downtown corridor?
That's correct, Commissioner. We have fiber loop, I guess we'll call them loops or pathways throughout the city of Eugene. And then we have taps into the various schools and sometimes other entities. And so, yeah, we have fiber. It was developed back to link our substations together. So if you ever saw a map of all our transmission lines and substations, it would be very close to that map, so it does spread throughout the city. And then we have used the extra fiber strands that we didn't need for our own operation. We offered those to the school districts for use and interconnecting of the schools. So yes, it's throughout the entire area.
Got it. Okay, well, I'll say two things and then I'll make a comment on the report. One, I mean, I'm personally supportive of figuring out a way as a community that we expand our capabilities around this type of technology. I mean, the pandemic is the current thing at the top of our minds with how we use it. But moving forward into the future, I mean, getting at Steve's point about how we interact as a society and how we, you know, may not travel as much moving forward. I mean, that may be a part of what, you know, we contribute to the community and the climate plan even, is that we are setting up a community that doesn't need to travel as much. So in, I know that that is a, you know, we just talked about the strategic plan and that would be a very large pivot, I think, away from what we are looking at. But I am personally going to foreshadow that I'm open to that potential discussion. And then two, that being said, I know in the report, there was a note about the age of our current fiber and that it's going to need replacement soon. So it's a new technology, we don't know how long it lasts technically, but it's rated for 20 to 25 years. And with that, we're going to have to make some resource decisions around that. And if we do have to do replacement, that may be a good time to partner with the city, ElCOG, other sorts of groups to utilize that resource and that replacement process in a way that's the most strategic for our community. And if the board decides that that's something that we're interested in doing, I'm more than willing to take that back to ElCOG as the E-Web representative to ElCOG. So that's what I'll put out there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I will say that when we've had some funding discussions with the city, because they're exploring some grant opportunities, one of the areas that, we mentioned two different areas. One of them was to help with the replacement cost of those aging assets and those fiber rings. So that was one that we've worked with the city on some potential funding. And the other one is to run a fiber line up to Blanton Heights, which is the, sort of the epicenter of radio communications for emergencies in the area. And that presently doesn't have a fiber connection to it. It is through microwave, which is a, has some vulnerabilities to it. So, yeah, I think there's opportunities, given the aging assets, that we can look to replace them maybe differently than we had them before. So funding's part of that, too. Thank you. I think Commissioner Helgeson had a comment. President Mattel?
Go ahead, Dick.
Well, I would just say that based on my recollection of the last iteration of the board's consideration, if the interest is in having E-Web play a major role in basically backing the investment in build out of a more or less universal, community-owned, high-speed internet system, that is something that can't be obtained incrementally or leveraged necessarily out of the asset base that we currently have. And so I would say that if going forward, it's always been an interest that's been kicked around. I think we abandoned it back then because we couldn't find a way to get the last mile without such an investment that we felt that we could never recover it. But that may have changed. I'm just, I'm just saying that if going forward, there's a board interest in the utility providing a major or playing a major role in a universal build out of some kind, that's like, as Frank said, that's a pretty big deal that would require putting some resources behind a strategic analysis and updating our understanding of what the business opportunities might look like with today's technology and environment. And certainly, to the extent that there's an interest in that, that has implications for what you replace some of the existing aging infrastructure with going forward. Because I doubt that we would have a system today that looks like it does if we were not intending to be in that business, nor would we invest in some of the capability and redundancy that we currently have going forward. So I'm just saying, if you find in your conversations going forward that there is that interest, then I think that's a whole new strategic initiative that has to be looked at pretty broadly. And we're not gonna back into it. Good luck with that. I think there's an interest out there.
Thanks.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, there's, there are, like I said, there's a lot of different business models. Some have been quite successful and some very similar models have been not so successful, very unsuccessful. So I think it'll be an interesting thing to explore going forward. It sounds, I can imagine I'll have some discussions with staff around what this might look like and what opportunities we see, kind of both in the near term and then something that's more strategic. So I'm sensing an interest to have those discussions.
If nothing else, Frank, it'll give you a very clear thing to focus your engineering skills around that community goal. Go ahead, Sonya.
Yeah, thank you.
And I want to put out there that, while I'm supportive of looking at it, that doesn't mean I'm supportive gung ho going after it right now. I mean, I think information is one thing, choosing a plan is a totally different thing. So gathering information, you know, if it's low cost, low risk, that's, that's one plan. Also say that I know that we're going to be surrounded by satellites circling the planet and I don't know how that technology compares to the fiber network and what it affords us or not. But technology is changing very rapidly and so these sorts of things always have to be put in context of where we're going, not where we are. So especially with technology. So, thanks.
All right, let's move into board wrap up. And Frank, I'll give you the first opportunity in case there were any concluding remarks that you wanted from the last set thing that you want to stuff into the wrap up.
No, I was just gonna say that we have, I didn't go through the agendas. And so the upcoming agendas, there's quite a bit of upriver topics for both the regular board session as well as the special session specifically on upriver topics in September. And so we'll be preparing for that. That was the only thing I was really gonna mention there. I think, like I said before, we're making a lot of progress on a number of subjects, including electrification. I think that electrification is gonna, there's a lot of different moving pieces to that. And I've described it as ultimately, we're gonna have to synchronize our supply and demand. And that's gonna be complicated to do, not just because technology's changing, because carbon content, regional influences, the one public comment around the fact that we have to look at this, will Eugene improve and the rest of the region get worse? Those are things we're trying to figure out. We're trying to capture those by looking at regional carbon content, which also varies with time and season. And so I think we're getting, we're gonna have a lot of work ahead of us to answer just a whole variety of questions around it. And so it's gonna be fun, but it's also gonna be informational when we start talking about new products and services and resource decisions that are gonna be coming up here within the next decade. And so looking forward to that. I don't have anything else, Commissioner Mattel. Thanks for the board's guidance on all the subjects. We'll get that building sold by Friday so that John can be happy. We'll either sell it or rent it, one of the two. So thanks for your advice.
All right, well, we will do our board wrap up. We'll go in the reverse order that we normally take this thing. John Brown, you're first.
I'm good, thank you. It's a good meeting. I have a real quick question on the agenda, Frank, about the 22nd, the Upriver meeting. I assume that's gonna be another virtual meeting?
Yes, that's gonna be a virtual meeting. And so the table tops that we, you know, we'll have to adjust the agenda a little bit, but the plan is at this point to go virtual on that one.
I just hope what we can address, because the internet upriver is abysmal at best. I mean, it's, some people still have dial-up up there. We want participation. I hope that we can do something to help accommodate people because what it takes to participate in a meeting such as this when you have very limited capacity may be a challenge for that group. And I think it would be a wasted effort for us to try and put too much on where they can't participate. So just hope we're ahead of that. So thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
I think, I guess I'm next. I don't think I have anything to add. Sonya, you're next.
The other thing I had to add was on to John Brown's comment. A lot of that Upriver meeting is there for us to answer questions to that group. And are we going to be able to have that format? I mean, we haven't had it in these meetings, but it's been more of a town hall style format. Seems like it's going to be just due to the very nature of the electronics that we're having to use, that we won't be able to do that.
There-
Just around there, it might be helpful to be able to gather questions at least from people ahead of time or, you know, something to that effect. I don't, I don't know. It's a really challenging model.
We'll have to look into a number of options, but there are also a number of options relative to the technology, including Teams. We use it in a certain mode that's kind of a broadcast mode, but there's also more of a meeting collaboration mode. And so we'll have to look into some other options that might facilitate some Q and A a little bit more.
Sonya, anything else? All right, Dick, your turn.
I'd just say as far as that Upriver meeting goes, maybe reach out to some of the folks that typically give us input on how to be effective up there. They may have some ideas about what would be useful and not, let's not assume that we necessarily know how best to do that.
And Commissioner Schlossberg, your last but not least.
We have received some questions from some Upriver folks. And so I know, Frank, that you said that some of those, that you would try to get those answers incorporated into the presentation. Just to support what Sonya said, that there's not really gonna be a huge opportunity for people to ask questions since the format will be so different. And the topics that we're looking at are pretty impactful for the people up there. So I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to answer their questions. So if for some reason there are problems with connectivity, then we'll go from there. But I think that that is something that we should look at ahead of time. And one last thing, it's a bummer that we don't get to go up there physically for the meeting because it's so beautiful and I really enjoyed that last year, but hopefully next year.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate that we are not looking to do it physically. I will, you know, I do understand the board's comments around Q and A. I think that's an important part of it. We're gonna have to look at what we do in the early September meeting versus the mid-September meeting to try to create a flow of information and a discussion. We're gonna have a kind of a strategic level discussion early in the month so that we can kind of coalesce around the Upriver territory's value itself and philosophies. There's lots of ways to answer questions. I've talked with staff even about doing an FAQ kind of approach to some of these issues. And so we're exploring a lot of different ways to communicate. Also, the meeting upriver is not one where the board takes action. And so it really is around discussion. And so I don't think if someone felt like they, for some reason, couldn't make that meeting for some reason, that there's not gonna be some action taken by the board. Some of these issues are longer term and are gonna take a little while to coalesce around and make decisions on. So, but there are some meaty topics and we do want to make sure we provide lots of opportunities for people to contribute.
Well, and I'll just say by way of closing that we did raise the COSA issue and signaled an interest in following through on that. So there's plenty of incentive for folks from the Upriver community to come on out and let us know what they think.
And I would be surprised, Commissioner, if they don't let us know what they think.
I, yeah, I expect it in full. All right. I think we're, we are there. I am, I, I'm, how do I do this? I'm gabbling us out.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioners.
See y'all, everybody. Have a nice week.
Thanks, Ann and Holly.